Welcome back, everybody. Do we need to specifically open this as a public hearing? No? Okay. We are going to start first reading on the county budget. At this point, we're not going to get into any discussion on any individual proposals. We're just going to accept the overall submission for the record and then probably have some discussions about how we want to break down into groups and what we're going to do with the Budget Committee between now and second reading so that we can be efficient that we do that. I have gotten some feedback from some folks about how I organized the meeting last year and what the best way is to go through the budget. And so, my suggestion is just going to be to go fund by fund in order as we have it in the book. And then, I think when we go to second reading, and let me know what you guys think about this, it might make sense to group the individual funds by department so that if we have questions and things before we make any cuts, we get an opportunity to have department heads here for that.
And I will say that is how the agenda is set now. It is grouped by department. So if they have multiple funds within their department, they can be done at one time.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm going to say thank you, Tori, for throwing out that, the, what you got on the screen. That's so helpful. Thank you so much.
And I will say, sometimes it's easy to get ahead of things and just go right at it, but I do want to make sure we take the opportunity at this point to thank the department heads, to thank the Auditor's Office for the very professional way which this is all put together and for a lot of the explanation notes and things like that we've seen on some items.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Super helpful.
Yep. All right. So we'll get started with the Commissioner's budget. Fund 1000, Department 068. And that is... Page 1, 2, 3, and 4. A total request of $5,501,071 and 0 cents. Mr. Clodswell, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much. And before we get started, I'd just like to say one thing. I will tell you, as Commissioner around here, you have no idea how much I appreciate these two ladies over here in their office and our HR lady Jennifer in the back of the room. I couldn't do my job without them. And I wouldn't be able to even know all the rules without them. So, I just want to publicly acknowledge, and there's other, everybody, I know what went on here a few minutes ago. There's a lot of turmoil in the county right now, but we also have a lot of good people.
Yeah, that's right.
Our department heads are great. So, may disagree on the policy from time to time, that's fine. But I don't want that to be a bad, I guess a bad look for all the departments around here because they have tried to do their job, you know? And, you know, I'm going to submit to the will of the council because that is statute what I need to do. So, and the councils work with me and I'm going to work with you. So, I will say going forward, I've tried to use money that we have before ever and I've encouraged other department heads to follow what you've asked for, to use the money in your budget, move if you have to, and if you come up short at the end of the year, and you know, Jesse, I call you from time to time, we did this and we did this, so you'd know if we come up short at the end of the year. So, the fact that if we do come up short, I don't want people to be afraid to come to this council because we're just trying to be responsible with the money. As a matter of fact, I'm going to be in front of you probably next month for just a little bit because I've moved money to try to help other, some of the other departments to not have to come to you before they have to. So, with that said, thank you. And any questions, I guess?
I don't think we have anything at this point. I actually wanted to, this is a weird question and it just hit me right now that Mr. Folsditch and I are going to be in a position where we might be voting on our own budget right now.
And I can't answer that.
I think you can vote on it. Now, you have to get November to get through it.
Yeah. I think it'd be different if November was over, maybe. I don't know.
There would be no issues.
No. I will say, I know one of the concerns around here is health insurance and expenses and because it's all up in the air right now being a, being, first year of being partially self-funded. As you notice, there's a little bit of increase in the Commissioner's side of the budget. There's a little increase in the backside. We don't expect the cost to go up that much, but we've, we just don't know because you don't know what kind of issues people are going to have. And we've got a very good workforce, but we've got, in some cases, an older workforce and you have issues. We're trying to address some of that. I'm not going to comment on it. We're trying to address some of that going forward to try to cut our costs. Plus, now we have rebates under our prescription drug program because that's not going to the insurance company, it's going to come back to us. And that could be following to next year. So, we're trying to prepare apples to apples as best we can, but we'll have better information in, what, two months, hopefully? Third quarter?
Did you say rebates for the drug?
They're supposed to be rebates for the drugs.
My understanding was, yes, we are to be receiving something back. The question that I'm not sure is yet answered is whether it will be this year or next year. It would probably, I'm guessing, after year end, when they get everything together. But my understanding is what was happening before is the insurance companies were receiving those rebates back and now since we are self-insured, we now receive those.
Okay. Do you have a guesstimate on what the rebates would be?
I do, and I'm not going to take it in a public meeting because it's all speculation and I don't want to mislead anybody.
Is it good?
Huh?
Is it good?
Is it good?
Yeah.
Well, we don't know for sure. Anything's going to be good because it's coming back to our pocket, not the insurance company. And that was the idea behind this, we're cutting out the middleman.
Right.
I don't know.
So, not to be, do I need to go get a lawyer now for that answer? Do I need to go get a lawyer for that answer? Okay.
I only play one on TV, so don't even try it, so.
I'm just being honest, I apologize. No, that's kind of where that's at. Other than that, it's pretty well standard. A lot of stuff should raise just small increments, but nothing, I don't think here should jump out over other years.
Okay. All right. Well, my suggestion is to do like we did last year and just accept these submissions with unanimous consent. So, is there objection to accepting the Commissioner's budget as presented, $5,501,071? And hearing none, the budget's considered submitted?
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got the General Fund Drainage Board, Department 63. We're on page 19 to 216.
Page numbers are at the bottom. Those are the ones you want to use?
Page 25, or excuse me, page 5 of 122, in the amount of $7,800. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? Page 6 of 122, Kuhn Cap Development, Fund 1138, Department 1, in the amount of $1,134,490. Is there objection?
Question. Is that number going to eat into the cash balances or that's the revenues that probably will support that, do you think?
We just received revenues from the DLGF late last week and with the Commissioner meeting, we haven't really had an opportunity to look at that. That's something that we'll have to dig into.
Okay.
All right. Is there objection? Is the budget considered submitted? We've got page 7, Fund 4702, Medical Benefit Self-Insurance, in the amount of $3,299,144.
Consent?
Are there questions or objections? All right, hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? County 4D Incentive, Fund 8895, page 8, in the amount of $4,500. Is there objection? Hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? You've got General Fund, Department 172, Building Maintenance, pages 9 and 10, I know, I'm sorry, just page 9, in the amount of $680,565. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Personnel, Human Resources, General Fund, Department 117, on page 10, in the amount of $105,497. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Motor Vehicle Highway, Fund 1176, Department 530, on page 11, for a total of Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1176, Motor Vehicle Highway, Department 531, page 12, in the amount of Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1176, Motor Vehicle Highway, Department 533, Highway General, on page 13 and 14, for a total of $6,299,628. Is there objection? Hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Kuhn Bridge, Fund 1135, page 15 and 16, in the amount of $2,604,473. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1169, Local Road and Street, in the amount of $962,000 even. That's page 17. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got the Sheriff's General Fund on page 18 and 19, in the amount of $3,63,000, I'm sorry, $3,63,292. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1114, Lit Special Purpose, on page 20 and 21 and 22, in the amount of And is there objection? Hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1155, Extradition Sheriff Assistance, on page 23, in the amount of $20,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1156, Firearms Training, in the amount of $30,000, on page 24. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1175, Misdemeanant County Correction, on page 25, in the amount of $104,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1192, Sex/Violent Offender Administration, Sex Offender Registration Fees, on page 26, in the amount of 700, I'm sorry, in the amount of $7,700. Is there objection? And the budget is considered submitted? We've got page 27, Fund 1222, Statewide 911, in the amount of $569,563 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1230, Central Dispatch, on page 28, in the amount of $329,389. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 4012, The K9 Program, on page 29, in the amount of $2,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 4906, Dare, on page 30, in the amount of $15,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 4913, The DEA Forfeiture Fund, on page 31, in the amount of $28,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 8811, Lake Enforcement DNR Grant, on page 32, in the amount of $65,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got page 33, Fund 1148, Drug-Free Community, in the amount of $70,000 even. Is there objection? The budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1000, General Fund, for the Clerk's Office, Department 1, page 34 and 30, no, page 34, in the amount of $468,600. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We have Fund 1000, Department 10, Voter Registration, on page 35, in the amount of $60,350. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1000, General Fund, Department 62, for the Election Board, on page 36, in the amount of $291,500. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1119, The Clerk's Records Perpetuation Fund, on page 37, in the amount of $122,500. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted?
Question. If we could go back to page 36, was there a supplemental sheet? Because the numbers aren't adding up for the request. The request is $291,000, but when you add up the columns, I don't know if I'm missing a page or not. Was there something supplemental to add to that?
Yeah.
There was?
I know. I don't know.
The bottom line, voting equipment is $263,000. I think it's getting buried in the total, Tim.
Yeah. It's the very last line. Right above the bowl, see it?
Oh, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Gotcha.
Do you want clarification on that?
Tim?
Clerk is here, she, do you want clarification?
Jenny, I didn't see that the bottom line of voting equipment was actually in there. I thought it was 291 three times, so my eye didn't pick it up.
And I believe she has her vendor here who came.
He is here if you had any questions?
What's that?
Microvote, Steve from Microvote is the vendor here. If you have any questions on that line item?
No questions. Again, I just didn't see properly the number, so, good.
All right. So we were on...
37 we finished, I think 38.
Yep. So we've got Fund 8899, The Clerk's 4D Fund, in the amount of $28,000 even, on page 38. Is there objection? Any questions? Hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1000, General Fund, for the Parks Department, Department 801, in the amount of $16,340.
No. That's actually, I, the reason I'm bringing that up, that fund total at the bottom, the 16 million, is the total of the general fund. All the general funds will go together. So the 28,000 that's right above it. So when you get into your general, anything that is a general fund accumulates. So, anything that you see, if you see that 16 million, that's not what that department's asking.
And I wasn't even reading it as million, I was reading it as thousands, but yeah, in the amount of $28,000 even. Thank you.
You didn't hear about the amusement park that's coming up?
So we've got a Parks Department budget of $28,000 even, on page 39. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got the General Fund for the Treasurer, on page 40, for a total of $211,760. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1000, General Fund, for the Recorder, on page 41, in the amount of $156,845. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1160, ID Security Program, on page 42, in the amount of $8,000 even. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Surveyor, on page 43 and 44, in the amount of $237,432. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1202, Surveyor Corner Perpetuation, on page 45, in the amount of $53,364. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Coroner, in the amount of $188,550, on pages 46 and 47. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1152, Emergency Plan/Write-To-Know for LEPC, on page 48, in the amount of $22,988. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1000, General Fund, for the Assessor, on page 49, in the amount of $196,900. Is there objection? And the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1131, Sales Disclosure, County Share, on page 80, I'm sorry, page 50, in the amount of $7,800. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1224, Reassessment, on pages 51 and 52, in the amount of $575,350. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Prosecutor's Office, on pages 53 and 54, in the amount of $793,170. Is there objection? And hearing none, the budget is considered submitted? Let's see. We've got several pages of explanation here. And we've got Fund 2511, The Prosecutor Pre-Trial Diversion Fund, on page 13, no, I'm sorry. It's going to be, is that page 62? Yeah. Yep. 62 and 63, in the amount of $196,322. Without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got 4010, Marshall County DTF Fund 1, on page 64, in the amount of $47,941. Without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 8897, Prosecutor 4D Post 99, on page 65, in the amount of $21,570. Without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got the General Fund for the Extension Office, on page 66, in the amount of $290,258. Without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Veteran Service Officer, on page 67, in the amount of $70,473. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Planning Commission, on page 68 and 69, in the total of $308,287. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Board of Zoning Appeals, on page 70, for a total of $7,000, or, excuse me, $7,700. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Building Commission, on page 71, in the amount of $89,600. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 1207, Unsafe Buildings, on page 72, for a total of $85,000 even. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? Got Information Systems from the General Fund, on page 73, for a total of $203,801. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for the Marshall County Museum, on page 74, for a total of $163,883. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 4908, for the Historical Society, on page 75, for a total of $84,343. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for Superior Court 1, on page 76 and 77, in the amount of $376,411. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got General Fund for Superior Court Number 2, on pages 78 and 79, in the amount of $576,937. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got the General Fund for Superior Court 3, on pages 80 and 81, in the amount of $270,076. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We've got Fund 2510, PSC Drug Court, on page 82, in the amount of $5,000 even. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted? We have Fund 9123, Community Corrections. And when it says odd, does that, they've got the different budget cycle per even and odd years, right?
Yes.
Yeah. On page 83, for a total of $362,802. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted?
Question, please?
Mr. Harmon?
Help me out with this one. In my numbers, the odd years, there were no money spent. Help me out on this. If it's, is this new? Is this just a new fund? I can't remember.
Yeah. This was a state-required.
Okay.
Fund. There was a lot of work done on Community Corrections part, on Tori's part, on the Auditor's Office part, trying to get this straight. trying to get this straightened out because there were some changes with how some things went on this, so.
Thank you.
That is a hundred percent grant money, just as an FYI, because it's a nine thousand series.
Okay.
I lost my place here, we're on eighty-four, right?
Yes.
Okay. We've got Fund nine one two five Prosecutors Diversion Community Corrections for Odd Years, on page eighty-four, in the amount of sixty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund nine one two seven Drug Court Community Corrections for Odd Years, on page eighty-five, in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars even. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one one two two Community Corrections Project Income, on pages eighty-six and eighty-seven, in the amount of three hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one one two two on page eighty-eight, Community Corrections Project Income Drug and Alcohol Program, in the amount of five hundred one thousand three hundred dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one one two three Community Transition Fund, odd year beginning July first, on page eighty-nine, in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got the General Fund for Circuit Court, on pages ninety and ninety-one, in the amount of three hundred seven thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted.
Jesse?
There is an adjustment on that one.
The CASA grant match wasn't originally included?
Yeah, the eleven thousand. Yeah, the CASA grant match was not originally included.
Okay.
So that needs to be added into that for the eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars.
Okay. Then the, the chair amends the submission, that the, the total for Circuit Court is going to be three hundred nineteen thousand one hundred forty-seven, to reflect the CASA grant match. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one two one three, also for CASA, what's the, what's the GAL acronym on there?
Guardian Ad Lightum.
Okay.
How about that?
All right.
How about that?
In the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred fifty dollars, on page ninety-three. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted.
Is this one grant funded as well? Is that, that's what it's grant funded, yeah.
All right. We've got the General Fund for the Probation Department, on pages ninety-four and ninety-five, in the amount of seven hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred ninety dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. Yeah, several pages of explanations here. We've got Adult Probation Administration or Administrative for Administrative Probation Fees, on page one oh eight, in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund twenty-one hundred Supplemental Adult Probation Adult Probation User Fees, on page one hundred nine, in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got General Fund for Weights and Measures, on page one hundred ten, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got the General Fund for EMA, on page one hundred eleven, in the amount of eighty-six thousand two hundred thirty dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got the General Fund for Soil and Water, on page one hundred twelve, in the amount of forty-seven thousand six hundred twenty-five. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one one five nine Health Department, and that's on page one hundred thirteen, one hundred fourteen, and one hundred fifteen, for a total of six hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred seven dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one one six one Local Public Health Services, on pages one hundred sixteen and one hundred seventeen, in the total of one million seventy-one thousand seven hundred nine dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got General Fund for the Auditor, on page one hundred eighteen, in the amount of four hundred eight thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We have Fund one one eight one Platt Mapping Fund, on page one hundred nineteen, for a total of forty thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund one two one six The Auditor's Ineligible Deduction, on page one hundred twenty, in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars even. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We have Fund one two one seven The County Officials Training Fund, on page one hundred twenty-one, for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted. We've got Fund zero six one, on page one hundred twenty-two, the County Council General Fund Budget, in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars, which does still, excuse me, which does still include two hundred thousand dollars for council other projects, which we could use for things like public safety assistance, or additional road program, stuff like that. So the vast bulk of that project, of that budget is, is that. And without objection, the budget is considered submitted.
And just a reminder, the budget is high to be advertised higher than what it will be. Once we advertise, we can add no more to the budget. You can always come down and move things around. You have your five levy funds that we can move around. But just as a reminder of where we are and why the numbers are so high before cuts come at the September meeting.
Do we have total numbers at this point?
Forty-two million seven hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars is what was submitted.
Okay. And we're going to get revenue estimates and all that stuff before second reading, is that?
I'm sorry, yes, the DLGF just released those late last week. We're working on those now to see where we're going to be on estimate, on revenue wise, and.
Forty-two million seven eight eight?
Seven eight three, seven eight eight, seven eight three point zero zero.
Well, do you, do you have the General Fund or no?
That would about sixteen million three hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
What's the last three, two, six?
Two, six, zero.
I'll go get my hearing checked.
All right. Can I get a motion to submit the entire budget considered read for the first reading?
It's all moved.
It's not counted.
All right, I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox and a second by Mr. Masterson to take the budget for first reading in total. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those who pull the same sign, and the budget is read. We do have Budget and Finance Committee meeting, one PM Tuesday, August twentieth, here. And Mr. Dalton will, will be there as well. Chair's recommendation is to break these things down either individually or in small groups, to get any questions that you might have, so we can get those both to the department heads and to either the Auditor's Office or Mr. Dalton on, on any questions for, for cuts ahead of that, ahead of that date. So be thinking about August twentieth to, to have your budgets read and to have your questions, so.
Yeah. Was that, was that one o'clock, two o'clock, I forget?
One o'clock. I've got it down here from one to four, and I'm hoping it doesn't take that long.
I had it anyway.
Is there anything else we need to achieve today? All right. Any questions from the council? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mr. Fosters for adjournment. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And, and the meeting is adjourned.